Ladies and gentlemen, before we get started tonight, let me just make a brief announcement. So we have an absence of a number of town council members, given the importance of the appointments tonight. I'm recommending that we table the appointments for a week, and it would give people the opportunity, who want to serve as well, to contact my office and let me know. And at the same time, give the council members, who I know want to be here, the opportunity to participate as well. So you're welcome to public comment. We'll go forward with some of the procedural issues tonight, but we will table the appointments until a special meeting next week.
You gotta be voted on.
Not to table it.
Yes, it does. It absolutely does.
That's in the chairman's discretion.
No, it's in the charter. So the town attorney was more than, there's more than five members here? So that's a quorum, and we vote on it.
Excuse me, sir. Do you have, you can't yell while we're having a discussion amongst the council. Yeah, let's get started. Seven o'clock. Ladies and gentlemen, item one, pledge of allegiance, moment of silence. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item two, public comment. Ms. Francis.
Oh, somebody else's time? Yeah, do those read in time.
Sure.
Uh, Jeff McPryity?
If you drag a time, please. Good evening, Jeff McPryity, 288 Kent Road, New Milford. Honorable Mayor David Gronback, ladies and gentlemen of the town council, I'm here to speak to four members of the town council tonight. Mayor Jane Lundgren, John Kane, Walter Bear, and Frank Gorgo. On November 7th, the will of the people's vote and their vote were changed as they did two years ago. I know that you all have a conscience, and I know you use your conscience as you make decisions in your daily life, and decisions here on the town council. Tonight in this meeting is such a time where your conscience will greatly matter. You will be voting to reinstate Cindy Davis, Jeff Winter, Julie Lyerson, Leah Gillett, who was a Democrat on the ballot, who was now registered unaffiliated, Theresa McSpedden, Exile Adam Zander, to their respective positions they lost in the November 7th elected, as registered Democrats enlisted on the ballot as such. The will of the people on November 7th did not say, "Oh, it is all right to lose your reelection bid because you will be reinstated by the town council," who has a majority of Democrats in attendance, in my opinion, does not count. See, the will of the people voted other than those positions by actual vote on November 7th. When this type of corruption within the town government goes against the will of the people, as it will tonight, it goes against the free democratic society that we live in, and we depend on to make sure our future, the town's future, and the business at hand is handled the right way. If this transpires tonight, then the corruption abounds in our town, and you will all define the very fiber of what the word corruption means. When it comes to time to vote on these reinstatements tonight, if you do, I urge you to use your conscience as a guide when making your decision. If you fail to act as a responsible elected official to this town, and do what the voters elected you to do, then you have not voted the conscience of the voters, and you have failed as a representative of the town, and you have not maintained your dignity, integrity, or self-respect, or worth as a representative of New Milford, and you will be staining your legacy for all time. I urge you not to vote, and let fear take its take, that is, in the intent of tonight's meeting coming to play here, and do not be intimidated in any way, shape, or form, but do the right and honorable thing for the town of New Milford, our citizens, our spoken, and our future. In doing so, you will have maintained your integrity, dignity, self-respect, and worth as a representative of the constituents who elected you to your respective position in the town council, and you will have cemented your, elect you to your representative position in the town council, you will have cemented your legacy as one that will always show that you always did the right and honorable thing. So will you maintain your integrity, dignity, self-respect, and worth, or have, and have a great legacy, or will you let political corruption define who you are? Connecticut statute 9-167A was created so that one party could not completely control the board or commission. Mrs. Vanessa Gronback, Leah Gillett, and Irene Scrabelli all changed their party within the last two weeks from Democrat to unaffiliated in order to circumvent state statutes. In conclusion, as can be seen above, the election has been circumvented in New Milford for the first time, where almost everyone who lost their seat in the November 7th election will reappointed to the seat they lost two weeks later, or at a minimum, other boards and commissions. If you set aside your conscience, integrity, dignity, self-worth, and your future legacy for corruption, this will happen. In the definition of corruption, dishonest or illegal behavior, especially by powerful people such as government officials, inducement to wrong by improper or unlawful means, the corruption of government officials is apart from the original, or from what is pure or correct, the political corruption is the abuse of public power, office, or resources by elected government official. I urge all you four people to please use your conscience when you make your decisions concerning reappointing these people to their respective position. From my perspective, it's not right, it's not just, and I'm asking you to please use your conscience if you got it. Thank you.
Mike Sinello. I'm glad to have the large attendance. Mike Sinello, 39 Taylor Terrace. I'm actually here because I wanted to let everybody know that the New Milford Center Cemetery is hiring. We're accepting applications for both part-time and full-time positions, and if you'd like to fill out an application or request, feel free to inquire within. Our office is located on cemetery grounds, and the entrance to our cemetery is located across move, across move, across Route 202 from New Milford Hospital. And if you'd like to fill out an application online, you can visit our post on Indeed by searching for the word cemetery in location, New Milford, Connecticut, our post should come right up.
Thank you. Katie Francis. Katie Francis, 123 Candlewood Mountain Road, New Milford. I'm sorry Frank isn't with us this evening, because I'm going to start off by quoting something he's very familiar with, as are a few other of you. You know, I'm a Rotarian of many years. In a Rotary, we have a basic tenet that we live by, and it governs, starts like this, called the four-way test. Of the things that we think, say, and do, is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? Our town has been stressed by an us-and-them divisiveness for the past 18 months. A fair election was held on November 7th, and in most contests, there were winners and there were losers. Since November 7th, a few days, residents have begun to calm down, they're talking about moving forward in positive ways, some people happier than others, but all the divisiveness and screaming on Facebook has died down. On Friday's revised agenda, the mayor added all but two of the Democrats who were not elected on November 7th. The Democratic Town Committee posted that, stated that, "This is just what the past mayor, Pat Murphy, had done." Per last meeting, was to appoint people. Not so. Appointed people, yes, almost every outgoing mayor does that, but not the people who lost in the election, and certainly not to the extent that it was done this time by appointing people who had changed their party designation to multiple committees. And what I find personally, as a volunteer for most of my life, really egregious, is that none of the sitting volunteers on these committees were ever spoken to or asked if they wanted to continue, and they found out by way of a letter, or maybe a phone call today from their department head, that they were no longer needed in a job that they'd been giving their time and their talent all along. Clearly, as many of you have said in your emails to the council and to me personally, by doing this, trying to put everybody back in at the last minute, all the people that didn't win, is a slap in the face of the voters of this town. The fact that, Mayor, you think that you can usurp the will of the voters, that you have no concern for the voters, that you say you care for, I find, number one, very disappointing to me, as sitting here with you for the last two years. But I'm going to say one more time, take a think about this, take a look at it, does it pass the four-way test, which is something every single person that walks the earth could live by? Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? And will it be beneficial to all concerned? I think not. Katie Rodriguez.
Good evening. Just give me a second here. All right. Katie. Joseph DiRigorio, 18 Cobbler Lane. I'm here, I'm on the Board of Finance, but I'm here today as a resident of the town. Mayor and members of town council, we all have the ability to make our own decisions, the ability to write our own history, and to leave our own legacy. This is not the first time that I have found myself standing here and asking that the Charter of our town, the laws we rely on to create the structure with which our little piece of the world is governed, be followed. Well, once again, I have found this administration in violation of the covenant you are sworn to uphold. Section 205 of the Charter entitled Vacancies, Effective Offices states that any vacancy from whatever cause arising in any elective town office, except in the case of the mayor as provided by section 603 of this Charter, shall be filled within 60 days of such vacancy by appointment, by the town council, or the unexpired portion of the term, or until the next regular town election, as defined in chapter 141 of the Connecticut State General Statutes, whichever shall occur first. Now, that last part, "For the unexpired portion of the term, or until the next regular town election, as defined in chapter 141 of the Connecticut State General Statutes, whichever shall occur," is what got me thinking. So yesterday, I reached out to some legal counsel, and I attained a legal opinion on the matter, which is included in the package that I handed out. Mr. Dibella, the town's attorney, has found that Mr. Kane's term on this illustrious body has in fact expired. What he said is, "The language of the Charter is clear pertaining to the differences regarding filling the vacancies in appointive and elective offices. In an elective office, the will of the citizenry is an issue, and the Charter number 205 purely and unambiguously states that the appointee serves until the next election, should that election occur before the natural expiration of the existing official's term. For an appointive Charter, section 103 states that the appointment is for the unexpired portion of the appointee's term, without regard to the next election, or after the installation of the next appointing council by mayor." So as a member of the electorate of this town, I am requesting you, Mr. Kane, to please remove yourself from the council seat. Again, I have attached permanent information in the package. Yeah?
Me too. Corey Winklestern?
Gregory Winklestern, 34 Asser Chuck Avenue, New Milford, Connecticut. So I spoke last month to the town council about my Eagle Scout project to install a disc golf course at Clyde Valley Park here in town. It was mutually agreed to hold off this on the agenda for tonight's meeting, but I'd like to say that I've begun to start accepting pledges towards my $10,000 goal, the fund raised for this project. If you'd like to make a contribution, please visit my GoFundMe page, Gregory Winklestern's Eagle Project. In addition to this, the main reason why I want to install a disc golf course here in town is because of my excitement for disc golf, and I want to educate others and spread this excitement that I have. So please visit my Facebook page I created, Gregory Winklestern's Eagle Scout Project, and my Instagram, DiscGolfNCT. Please like, follow, and share, this would be a great help. I'll be in the hall for a couple minutes, if anyone has any questions, you may also contact me at DiscGolfNCT@gmail.com. Thank you.
Mark Conrad. Mark Conrad, 41 Mountain Valley. Brief statement on the board commission appointment. Come to understand that the positions are made by appointment, and the current mayor, as per our Charter. But that said, I don't believe that the rule has been properly applied. I don't believe the intent of these appointments is to negate or to precede election results. A person who is on the ballot and not selected to a position should not be summarily appointed to that position, in essence, overriding the will of the voters and the results of the election. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mark.
Grossman, 18 Hilltop View Road, New Milford.
Katie Turp. Frank will have his own version of a four-way test when he gets to discuss this, especially in this week, he'll have his own interpretation of what you have to say about this. I'm here to say that, talk about the appointments, and say that really, there is nothing new under the sun here with these appointments, that didn't happen two years ago. Mayor Murphy, at the time, made, in the two meetings, 124 appointments. That was unprecedented at the time. I think someone's speaking after me, I have more statistics, but that was unprecedented compared to all the previous mayors in terms of the 11th hour appointments that were made. So she set a precedent then, for outgoing mayors then, making appointments while they were legally able to do so at 11th hour. I want to point out that the way this works is that a mayor has two years, okay? Two years to, in office to make appointments, and these appointments always come up on November 30th. Well, Mayor Murphy had her two years, 2014 and 2015, Mayor Gronback had 2016, but, you know, I think what the Republicans are trying to do is rob him of 2017, leaving him with just one year to make appointments, after the last mayor had two years to make appointments. Mr. Bass is in office, he'll have 2018, and if he is not successful running for reelection, he will have the ability in 2019 to do the same thing, to make appointments while he's still in office for boards that close on 2019. So really, you've got the same thing. In terms of, other thing is, there's been misinformation about this as well. I'm not going to name names, but posted on social media by one of the victorious candidates last week, posted on social media that Republicans were being kicked off of boards and commissions. That is absolutely, positively not true. Okay, so spreading misinformation on social media is so counterproductive, and talking about a new era here in town, you know, I don't think that that really stands up, in terms of, let's also, I also want to say, first of all-
Andy, excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, this is an important matter. Everybody entitles you, we give you respect when you speak, please don't laugh and chuckle or say things from the crowd. Let's give everybody the respect.
If I am, if I am to be wrong about that, I will apologize, but there are no Republicans that I know of, or are in the middle of their term, when I say being kicked off, I mean in the middle of their term, is when their term was not up. If their terms are up, yes, some Republicans are being replaced, as is the right of the mayor. I want to add that in 2015, Treasure Kirk ran for the Board of Finance and lost, Mayor Murphy appointed him as an alternate to the Board of Finance. That's the exact scenario as to what's happening now. Democrats voted unanimously, two years ago, to every one of Mayor Murphy's appointments. In fact, Mayor Murphy reappointed people, some people who hadn't even been showing up at some of the meetings. In fact, there was contention about that, about some of the people who maybe not qualified because they weren't showing up at meetings, but the Democrats voted unanimously. Thing is, this is all over alternate seats, okay? And all this the mayor is doing, in a lot of these instances, is appointing Democrats to alternate seats that Democrats are entitled to have. The fact that these people ran for election last time is totally irrelevant, totally irrelevant. These people are qualified, that's all that counts, is that these people are qualified. Also, we also remember that there are no alternates to town council, so when Beth Fowler lost last time, she was given a full seat, replacing Joanne Chapin on the Board of Finance. So talking about candidates, you know, who were defeated, and being named as alternates, well, it happened two years ago. Today's situation, it's much different. There are alternate seats on finance, planning, zoning, and ZBA, and these need to be filled by Democrats. We've left the alternate seats for Republicans open for Mr. Bass to replace when he takes office. There are still alternate seats open on many of these boards and commissions, and Mr. Bass is free to make his own appointments. We also should point out that there were some boards where the start date was actually January 1st, not December 1st, where Mayor Murphy made those appointments, and again, the Democrats agreed to that unanimously, two years ago.
Andy, your time's up.
So, okay, so I just want to say that, and the other argument people made is that these are reappointments, not appointments, there is no difference between reappointments and appointments, it's really the same thing.
As much as I want to hear the rest of this, if we don't keep to five minutes-
Oh, it's five minutes up? I'm sorry. But you were giving me one.
No.
Okay.
Although you were interrupted, so I mean, an extra 30 seconds wouldn't be the end of the world.
There you go. So thank you very much.
Adrian Arriquio.
Adrian Arriquio, 72 Trinisky Road. I would first like to say thank you to Mayor Gronback for serving the town for two years. I know that you've had to put up with a lot of noisy people come to these town council meetings, and it takes a lot to put up with that, you've done a lot for the town, so thank you, we appreciate it. The other thing I'd like to say is, I've had the privilege to serve on a commission for the last two years. I know for a fact, there were three expired terms for over a year. If any one of those people wanted to be reappointed, all they had to do was write a letter to the mayor, you all know this, nobody did, along with all the other vacancies, expired terms. So anybody behind me, or in this room, who wanted to serve, could, did they come forward? How many of you, show of hands? How many of you wanted to serve? Pick up your evenings?
Mr. O'McSherry?
How many here? I see a couple of people.
Mr. Arriquio, address your comments to the council.
Okay, so my point is, is that any of these people who are back here, who are so fired up and angry, had every opportunity to come forward and say, "I would like to serve on a commission or a committee." I don't know how many of them did, I think it's very few, because a lot of these seats go begging, and you all know this. So, and someone just told me that when Art Peitler was leaving office, he appointed 50 Republicans. So there is precedent here, this is not something that people should be all fired up over, it's just serving the town, and you all know it, you all served on this board, you're elected, it doesn't matter, a lot of these things are not elected. But I just hope going forward, that we have a little more civility, because I'm looking at you two, Mr. Esposito, Mr. Bass, because a lot of times I've sat here and I've watched you smirking into the audience, you two, and I hope that you're going to change your behavior going forward, because it's really not dignified. No, you see, you're still doing it, and this is what you've been doing for two years. And that's why all these people get fired up, you're setting the example. And so you really need to, no, you're not-
Starts with the leadership side.
I'm still speaking, I'm still speaking.
Mr. Esposito, please let us speak.
You really need to tone it down, because it has reached a level where people are violent, they're threatening members of the Democratic Town Committee on Facebook. This is true, so I think it's time to just take a step back, this should not be a big deal. We need people to serve in the town, because that's how the town runs. So thank you, that's all I have to say.
James Kip.
What about?
Tim Harkin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and to the council. Like many people here, I'm here to speak about the appointments to the open boards and commissions tonight. I do have a unique perspective that some other people may not. I've actually been on a board, volunteered since 2010, as an alternate on the zoning board of appeals. I also ran this past November for one of the open seats on the planning commission, coming in fifth out of five. As I ran as an unaffiliated candidate, I am not involved in either political party, I never have been, the only time I've ever been registered for a political party was for a couple months in 2016, vote a primary. I ran because I felt I had something to offer the town, and I wanted to try and give back. I've been approached by the incoming administration about possible positions, I've also been offered a position as an alternate by the outgoing administration, which I decided to decline, that was my choice. What I'm trying to get at is, I don't have an axe to grind either way here, I have a working relationship with both administrations, at least until tonight. My problem is, I have a few problems with the board and commission appointments that are proposed. One is that, as I can say, as an unaffiliated candidate, being unaffiliated actually hurt me, it put me on a ballot where people couldn't find me, and then I had no party support in what turned out to be a very much a party-line vote, there are several people appointed to boards and commissions that have magically turned unaffiliated. You can actually go on the Secretary of State's website, look them up, and as of November 14th, many of them are still registered as Democrats according to the Connecticut Secretary of State. Where this comes into place is things like, on the inland wetlands committee, as proposed, the commission would end up having five Democrats, one unaffiliated, and one Republican. An unaffiliated is still listed, according to the Secretary of State, as a Democrat, which means it violates minority representation laws. And it's just head scratching to me why that would happen, that people that have been working as a Democrat for years, that were appointed previously to boards, and have run for election as a Democrat, now are unaffiliated, it just doesn't add up. One of the other things that I wanted to speak to, is that there are many people that are nominated for multiple board positions. And yes, I've been here long enough, I've seen that happen, but it's been done to an extreme extent. There are people that have been nominated for up to five board positions. Most of the people that have been nominated for multiple positions are very active members of the Democratic Town Committee. And as far as the Democratic Town Committee, according to the News Times, when they had their caucus in this summer to pick their slate, there were 37 people there that picked that slate, now many of those people are on these boards and committees. We live in a town of 28,000 people. To have 37 people have that much influence, and a Republican Town Committee had 55, according to the News Times. To have people on four boards, or five boards, three boards, there are resources in this town, there are people that live here, that work here, that care about this town, that you need to reach out to and try and find. You know, it's, it all is still building on this animosity between two parties, and most of the people in town are not affiliated with parties, and we're tired of the bickering, we're tired of the childish, we're tired of the fighting, we just want people to work to make New Milford the best town in the community. Thank you.
Heidi Eddel.
Good evening. I wanted to take a moment to thank all of you, the outgoing members of the town council, and those of you who will continue to serve, and the mayor, for your hard work and dedication to the town. I have attended many meetings over the course of the last year, and I've actually witnessed a great deal of bipartisanship that you would think doesn't exist because of all the accusations to the contrary. Mr. Bass, you've promised an increase in civility, which I hope extends to those speaking on your behalf on social media. It's important that tonight's agenda of nominating the citizens proceed as smoothly as the transition did two years ago. The Democrats at that time supported Mayor Murphy's appointments in a bipartisan manner, and I do hope to see some spirit of cooperation tonight. The outrage about the proposed appointments should be put aside, because it's important that all members of the citizens of New Milford be represented. Mr. Bass won the election fair and square, as I say, but Mayor Gronback had a great deal of support. Many people, including myself, voted for candidates across political spectrum. Thank you for being the professionals that I-
I wanted to take a moment to thank all of you, the outgoing members of the Town Council and those of you who will continue to serve, and the mayor, for your hard work and dedication to the town. I have attended many meetings over the course of the last year, and I've actually witnessed a great deal of bipartisanship that you would think doesn't exist because of all the accusations to the contrary. Mr. Bass, you've promised an increase in civility, which I hope extends to those speaking on your behalf on social media. It's important that tonight's agenda of nominating the citizens proceed as smoothly as the transition did two years ago. The Democrats at that time supported Mayor Murphy's appointments in a bipartisan manner, and I do hope to see some spirit of cooperation tonight. The outrage about the proposed appointments should be put aside, because it's important that all members of the citizens of New Millford be represented. Mr. Bass won the election fair and square, as I say, but Mayor Gronback had a great deal of support. Many people, including myself, voted for candidates across political spectrum. Thank you for being the professionals that I have seen you be and for representing all of us.
Julie.
Hi, I'm Julie Leerson. I live at 124 Great Brook Road here in New Millford. In August of this year, I was put on the slate to run for Planning Commission, and then in September of this year, I was appointed to planning to fill an unexpected vacancy. I served a short term, about two and a half months, with diligence and pride. I was very honored to accept the appointment, and I feel like I did a good job, although two months is not an awful long time to build a record. I ran to be, to for a four-year term this fall. I came in third out of five. There were five candidates running for two slots. The two winners received twenty-five percent, twenty-four percent of the vote, and I received the third-most votes, which is twenty-two percent. It was, I think, about a hundred and eighty votes that separated. So congratulations to my fellow board members that are now serving new terms. What impacted me most about this campaign, which was my first, was that I received many calls and texts of support from across the political spectrum. I had people text me to say, you know, "We do not agree at all anywhere politically, but I believe you want to serve the town, and so I'm voting for you," which was extremely touching and humbling and was just an honor to hear, and so I thanked them. Last week, I was asked to accept the nomination to the slate to be an alternate on the Planning Commission. I am not taking anybody's seat. I am not taking anybody's power. I am not taking anybody's voice. As it sits now, my understanding is that there are at least four Republicans sitting on the board, one of whom is going to be a Town Council member. I'm not sure if they can continue to serve on Planning or not, but my understanding of the charter is that should he vacate that seat, he would be then filled by another Republican, and therefore we do require in the charter minority representation. There are two alternate slots. To be an alternate means that you should come to the meeting, do your homework, be prepared, listen, but you do not vote unless there's an empty seat, because a full member isn't available that evening. Should the Town Council vote to approve me to this position, I will continue to serve, thinking of the needs of the town in my mind, not about how I can get the other side. That is how I conducted myself throughout this campaign, and I will continue to do so. I do understand that there's a group of people insisting that this is unprecedented and unheard of. I did see on social media this morning a man I have not met, named, goes by Pete Helmes, and he stated publicly that in the past, he said a long time ago, many years ago, I'm not sure when it was, if he's here tonight, I welcome him to chime in and tell me what year this was, but he said he was in precisely the same position. He was running for a seat on Planning, he lost the election, and he was then appointed to serve as an alternate. He then went on to serve for many years. A response from somebody else on social media, who was upset about my appointment among others, said, "I'm sure your appointment was for good reason, but..." Dot, 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 "mine was obviously a subversion of the will of the people." I do not understand this logic. We can argue all night about how 2017 is the same, or different from 2015, or any other year. But I feel called to serve. I hope that the Town Council would recognize my intentions to serve the needs of the town. Your future colleague on the Town Council, Lisa Hido, posted that this slate represented a missed opportunity for the Democratic Town Committee and the Democratic mayor, that it was a missed opportunity to allow the new mayor and administration to have full reign. I will also posit that this slate presents an opportunity to the incoming administration to be accepting of people from the other side. I'm not just a capital D Democrat. I'm your neighbor. I'm your PTO volunteer. I'm the mom of your kids' friends. I made Cinderella's costume a couple of years ago at the high school. I'm not a monster, and I'm not going to take anybody's worst away. I thank you for your time, and I hope that you will consider my position on Planning as an alternate.
My name is Alfred Esposito. We arrive at length. I've served one partial term on the Park and Run Commission. I have not been renewed for membership on that commission. The mayor knows full well my intentions to continue to serve. We've discussed at great length my vision and ideas on what I wanted to see in the parks. Collaboratively, I've served. Apolitically, I've served. I'm not being renewed. What is being done here is disrespectful, disgraceful, and vindictive. Everyone in this room and everyone in this town sees it for what it is. You have two members not here, not because they can't make it, because they're embarrassed. They wouldn't be able to face their neighbors if they weren't participating in this. You have no right to table this. It's the council's meeting. You just run it. They have to vote and decide whether to table an issue. I say you decide it tonight and follow the charter for once. Thank you.
Hi, Cindy Davis, 15 Park Lane West. So, I became involved in politics after I retired. My decision to run was based upon caring about the town. I had never run for an office before, and it's what I'm feeling right now, similar to my times talking previously about the amount of animosity and the intensity of emotion that's being felt here, along with the other times that I have spoken, because of social media. I don't go on social media. I can't stand the amount of wrong information that's being put out there. In response to what was just said by other people, first of all, I never had an office, so the first person speaking, it's not a reinstatement. I was put on boards or positions because I'm retired and because I want to do the work. It is not about politics. It is not about trying to take sides. I feel so strongly about the wrongness of the emotion that is being carried in this room by people who continue to act non-civilly, by the first person getting into an argument. People from the audience should not be calling out. That has happened at different meetings that I have gone to, like the Stewart Commission, this and that. I have gone to many of those meetings. There are not a lot of people that go. It takes a commitment to want to serve, but here there are so many people who are so opposed to the appointments, knowing that the information put out by social media was erroneous, and all the reasons that now are being stated, that other appointments were made by the previous mayors to appoint all the Republicans. The sidedness is wrong. And then I want to address, when I spoke to Town Council members about once before, the behaviors and the non-civility of council members. Mr. Esposito, watching you when somebody was talking, and how you were looking, and how you were behaving, was not what a council member should do. When I addressed Mr. Simanski, because he wasn't paying any attention to me when I was talking, and he had no idea that I was waiting for him, was a representation of the fact of not doing your job. I am here because I care about the town. It is not about politics. I also want to address the divisiveness of one of the candidates that was elected when she claimed she was a Democrat, when she was fully not part of the Democratic ticket. She could have run as an unaffiliated, but she ran as a Democrat. There's so much divisiveness going on right now, and it has to stop. I've spoken about this before. I have never raised my voice in here before, but that is my true emotion coming out. I am here to serve. I have chosen to take on different positions because I care. I don't want to see the good work that the mayor did to help the town go down, and I'm afraid that's what happened, because I don't think in my mind, of all my years living here, when Pat Murphy was mayor, that she did as much as the mayor did, caring about the well-being of the town. That is what I care about. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Doug Skelly for Virgil Land. As many as you know, I'm a councilman-elect. You know, I'm actually here to thank the council members for their time the last two years, and thank the mayor. You know, we have become a very divisive group, and I ran, I was asked to run to add some civility and some peace and calm. I don't get into social media. I don't get into vashing people. I'm well-known in the community, and that's why I ran. So, I'm not here to yell and scream. I'm not here to pick out people's names. I'm here to ask you people, please, bring back civility, people behind me, and for the next two years, hopefully, we can move this town forward. Thank you very much.
Just wanted to congratulate Mr. Bass and all the other elected town officials on their win in the election. He ran a clean campaign, and I look forward to a more transparent, physically responsible administration. I just wanted to convey to you all tonight my extreme disappointment with the selection of the mayor's appointments. The majority of the New Millford townspeople that voted do not want some of these appointments to be approved. If they wanted them, they would have been elected fair and square. Are these nominees being paid back for support, or is this just a vindictive, spiteful parting gift? There are many people who have served on these commissions and boards who, had they been given the chance, would have continued their service to the town if given the opportunity. Sadly, they weren't asked. The Town Council has a responsibility to the townspeople of New Millford to not approve certain appointees. This is your chance to redeem yourselves for the poor decisions made over the last two years. It's time to unhitch your wagon. Considering this mayor's breach of contract with the state of Connecticut regarding the Children's Center, the appointment of Vanessa Gronback to the Board of Ethics is a complete slap in the face to the families of the Children's Center. Your decision to divulge Children's Center family incomes and household numbers in the press and on Facebook put our town in danger of losing the grant that helped so many New Millford families. Mrs. Gronback posted on Facebook that the family income and number of family members was available in the Town Hall to anyone that asked. It is not. It is FOIA-exempt. I hope you will all consider these actions when you make your decisions on these appointments. Thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Winter, 22 Maury Road. Since it is unfortunate that three people cannot be here, I think it's a misnomer that they are embarrassed. I believe one is somewhere down south, and the other one's coming back from a rotary trip, if I'm not mistaken, so I doubt that it has anything to do with embarrassment. I think a history lesson is a little bit in order here, because we talk about precedents, we talk about all these types of things, and, you know, I went back and I looked as far as I could on the town website to see what the previous mayors had done in their last meetings, or one or two meetings prior to them leaving office. It goes back as far as 1989 with Mayor Stewart helping. He made one appointment. Mayor Rock, Walter Rock, he made no appointments. Mayor Furman, she made three appointments. Mayor Peitler made two appointments. Mayor Gambino made eight appointments, and most of them were to the 9/11 Memorial Maintenance Committee, which I don't think people are against. The precedent changed in 2015, went over two meetings. First, on November 9th, Pat Murphy appointed fifty people. Fifty. Then, on November 23rd, seventy-four. I think you can understand why people were upset then about this extreme break in precedent. Let's face it, that is extreme. But, the Democratic members of this Town Council acted in a bipartisan and civil manner and approved every single one. And Mr. Bass moved, he made the motion to put these people's names out there. So, he has his handprint on this too. But again, they had, Democrats had all the rights.
Do you mind turning off your cell phone, please, while? We're in session. Thank you.
Even high schools know that. So, the Democrats could have voted against any of them, and Mayor Murphy even appointed people whose terms didn't start until a month after she would have left office. And the Democrats still voted unanimously. Why? Because it's a courtesy. It's a courtesy to the outgoing people, okay? Also, Mr. Bass has the full opportunity to appoint Republican alternates to all of these positions. Mayor Gronback is not appointing alternate people to Republican seats. There is not one Republican. There's nothing, an alternate seat on the elected board. Not one. It doesn't exist. You can say what you want. Now, why am I, my name is suddenly thrust into this, because, you know, again, I did lose the election, and I can accept that, but Mr. Trevor Herbst, in 2015, lost his seat as he ran for the Board of Finance, and yet he was appointed as an alternate, not a full member, but an alternate for the Board of Finance, and nobody objected to that. Why are people here objecting tonight? What's the point? The same thing was done, and yet didn't object then, and now you are. That's called hypocrisy. Mary Jane, what's going on? Okay. I'd like to just switch quick to ethics, because it speaks. It speaks to the incivility that has gone on in this election cycle, and it also affects someone who's not here tonight, and that's Mr. Frank Wargo. One thing about when you make ethics complaints, ethics complaints are meant to be completely quiet, private, and silent. You are not to make anything public about them unless the respondent chooses to do so. Unfortunately, a gentleman by the name of Rick Agee went public the Saturday prior to the election by saying the following on social media, that there are several ethics complaints filed, I quote, "There are several ethics complaints filed against Mr. Wargo, and time will tell." Someone else asked, "Such as?" He said, "Well, what he did was unethical." He said himself he was going to put the question before the Ethics Committee. So that would be one. Are there others? Yes. I know of at least two. Time will tell. They have ninety days to investigate. First of all, you shouldn't know about ethics complaints unless people are talking out of turn. That is dead wrong. Dead wrong. And if he filed one himself and is yapping about it, that's really wrong. And you want to talk about civility? That's the bottom line. And I've been talking about ethics here since June, and it is time that this Town Council or the future Town Council look at accepting the Model Municipal Code. But if people like this are going to talk publicly...
Time's up, Jeff.
That is... That is way, way out of line, especially to Mr. Wargo.
Judy Langley, 35, Meeting House Terrace. And I wanted to talk about the youth agency. Yes, I am on the commission. Well, I was on the youth agency, but I was not reappointed or put on nominating, nor were several other. There are four Republicans, four Democrats, and two unaffiliated. We have never put politics above the youth. We are probably the only commission who has, basically, every one of our decisions is unanimous. Yet, we were not called, and I don't know why you would want to make it a partisan. It's about the youth. I would hope we would have stood as an example, because people were arguing about civility. We were able to work together 100% of the time, and I don't know why we weren't asked, because most of us wanted to reserve, and most of us found out through Facebook. That's all. That's all.
Hi, Jackie Maroy. 38 Putnam Road, almost forgot my address. First of all, I want to thank Mayor Gronback for his work over the past two years. The improvements that you made in town are impressive. And the town is different because of you, so you can take that with you. I want to also congratulate everyone else that won their seats on the town council. And my goal here is to move forward and to eliminate the animosity, the anger, the us-and-them mentality. I mean, we can go, guys do this, women do that. I mean, I'm tired of this black and white kind of thing. We're all individuals. We all live in New Milford. We want a nice town. We want good roads. We want trees that were tagged 10 years ago to be cut, 10 years ago, and not brought up so that Mayor Gronback can explain why a tree was tagged for 10 years with Mayor Murphy. So, apparently, there were some things that didn't happen before. The roads weren't done. The trees weren't cut. I don't know what else didn't happen, but not much. I didn't see much happening. And I have seen things happen the past two years. And I think everybody is excited about this town, and they want to make it a better place to live. And I'm looking forward to the future to work with everyone as a town member and to treat each other with respect and understand the other side of things. That's what you're here for, to look at the global view, as far as New Milford is concerned, of how that impacts everyone. And I don't like the animosity. I don't like the Facebook stuff and the thing about the elections or the commissions. I don't see a lot of people charging up to the town hall going, "I want to serve." Every Wednesday night, I want to hang out in the library for like four hours and read stuff. You know, it sounds really, you know, exciting. But people do it, and they do it every day. And nobody gets paid. Somebody alluded to the, what the big gain was for working on one of these commissions. Some of them, I can see that that could be a political issue. If you're in planning and you're a builder, there could be, you know, some things that wouldn't be appropriate. But let's go with something generic like Parks and Rec. Everybody likes Parks and Rec. So, let's try and work together on that. But I want all of this vague kind of "you people" kind of stuff to stop. You won. You're the new mayor, Mr. Bass. Congratulations. And your door is always open. That was your big thing, right? That was the statement? So, I'm looking forward to that. And I would like to see the same progress that's been going on for the past two years in this town to continue. Make it great. I mean, you got the ball. Run with it. And I want to see great things, and I'll be around. So, thank you.
Peter Mohn? Hi, Peter Mohn, 64 Aldridge Road. I'm going to say what I said two years ago at this meeting. I started off by congratulating the mayor for her service to the town. I'm going to start off by congratulating Mayor Gronback for the service to this town. A lot was done in these two years. River Trail, Bike Trail, Community Center, the list goes on. Subcommittees and committees that you appointed to get things going. So, congratulations on that. The second thing I spoke about two years ago were the appointments. After the election two years ago, there were 124 appointments, or reappointments, by Mayor Murphy. And the only ones I objected to were the ones that were being appointed January 1st, that would have been 2016. I said, "It should be confirmed with the, you know, with the mayor's term." So, I said, "I really think those should be taken away, and the rest should be approved." And that's what was done. You agreed with me at that time that those should be taken away. And there was bipartisan support to support those 124 appointments and reappointments at that time. And I think that's what you have in here again. These appointments and reappointments go along with the charm of the mayor. Now, prior to, two years ago, this wasn't an issue. Appointments and reappointments, there were handfuls done. But it was done two years ago, and that changed things. And if you now oppose that, for those of you who were sitting here two years ago, now you're going back on what you approved and supported two years ago. So, that's not really great. Another thing that was mentioned tonight was that people who don't get elected, don't serve, and stuff like that. You know, that's not true either. Actually, I was just talking to a gentleman out there who had lost an election a couple of years ago, and then was put, you know, on town council. I met you a few years before that. You know, Beth Baldwin was put on finance two years ago after she lost an election. So, it's foolish for somebody to say, "Oh, you lost an election, so you don't get appointed to anything." That's been done. That's been done time and time and time, for years. So, that's nothing new. It's not corruption. It's a lot happens. People volunteer. They put their name forward. You don't get elected, you don't get elected. You volunteer for something else. And sometimes you even get appointed to an elected position, which is what happened to you. There are certain things that need to happen in this town. And I really hope that a few things are looked at in the near future. About 11 years ago, they had a charter revision. Charter revision looked at a lot of things, but really didn't get a lot done. This town is too big for the way things are run because it creates too much of this animosity. Take nothing away from you, Mr. Bass. I said 11 years ago, I think we need a town manager. It's nothing personal. I said it long before you were becoming mayor. I still think we do. We need a town manager. Hire somebody. And you may like to hear this opinion. I think the mayor's salary should be doubled. Because this isn't a little town anymore. Why do we still elect a town clerk and tax clerk? Nobody ever think about that. That's, there's no reason for that. They're department heads. Hire them like department heads of every other department. There have to be changes. They have to work together. Four years ago, I was at this table, and I said, I wasn't running. And some people asked me why I wasn't running. And I said, "Well, I just chose not to." And they said, "How long you been here?" I said, "Well, I have eight years and 12 years on Park and Rec." And they said, "Well, you did your time." And I kind of laughed. I said, "The only place you hear that is either getting out of jail or, you know, serving on town council." So, I feel like I violated my prohibition, probation, and I'm back on town council for two more years at least. But really, this animosity, you got to stop it, everybody. And as leaders of the town, you got to call it out. People said, "Tell them enough. Just enough. We got a town tour." Stop this. I don't, you know, people say this a lot of stuff on social media. I don't read social media. I don't go on social media. Every once in a while, people say, "Oh, you want to see this?" I go, "Why?" I'm a Giants fan. I'm having a bad enough year already. I don't want to read this stuff. And it's not helping me. I got to sleep at night. You know, I got to get up early. So, stop the animosity. Stop the fighting about it. Work this out. There were 124 appointments two years ago, so don't make this sound like this is really like, "Oh, my God, I can't believe he's appointing 67 people." It was twice as many two years ago, and there were no complaints at that time. Come on. I'll see you next month. I'll be here.
Good evening. My name is Steve Looney. I have a 55 Ford X Road in New Milford. I just want to follow up on a couple of things that have come up this evening and this week. I too am surprised by some of the appointments, but I believe that, yes, appointments are made, appointments expire, and people are replaced. That's how we do it. I think that's what, basically, everybody who's here is talking about. So, I'll kind of go back to Mr. DiGagario's point. Mr. Chamberlain was removed from the town council. He was an elected official, and he was removed. Mr. Kane was appointed. As per the charter, as is everybody on a commission. And I'm glad that our legal representation is here tonight to make sure that a member of the general public is not casting a vote in a town council meeting. As of the 7th of November, Mr. Kane's term expired. Per the charter. So, I would ask, and also see as Mr. DeBellas provided a legal opinion to the town council, I would ask why Mr. Kane is still seated at the table. I would ask to make sure that Mr. Kane does not vote on any of the items tonight because he has as much right to vote as I do. And I'm not elected. I've been reminded on social media, because I'm not an American citizen, I can't even have an opinion. But that's incorrect. I hear a lot of people talking about personal attacks and speaking about people. There's a form, or there's a set of papers that go out when the agenda goes out. And it says right on the agenda, "When you're speaking in public to the town council, there are to be no personal attacks to any of the town council members." What happened to that rule tonight? Where's the parliamentarian tonight? When Mr. Esposito's name was brought up? When Mr. Bass's name was brought up? Yes, I'm bringing Mr. Kane's name up because Mr. Kane shouldn't be seated here. He's still sitting here, and he shouldn't be seated here. His term, as per the charter, Section 205, as Mr. DiGagario stated, "Any vacancy for whatever cause arising in an elective town office, except in the case of mayor, as provided for in Section 603 of this charter, shall be filled within 60 days, or search vacancy appointed by the town council for the unexpired portion of the term or until the next regular town election." You were appointed two months ago. We've had an election last week. Your term is up. I appreciate the fact, I do. I really do. I mean, I know people say, "Oh, well, if you don't go to town council, I guess, or get elected to town council or one of these boards, you're nothing." I don't know. I volunteered for 12 years with the basketball kids. I think I contributed. I'm not up here looking for a trophy. But I contributed in my own way. A lot of people do. A lot of people do. You don't get the limelight. You don't want it. It's for the kids. This is for the town. So, again, I urge our $97,000 a year legal department to make sure this evening that they render an opinion before any votes are taken. There is also a quorum here. So, even when Mr. Kane is not seated, we still have five town council members. So, we have a quorum. We didn't come here to be told there's going to be another special meeting for these appointments. I believe these appointment votes should be taken tonight. If it's decided that these people are not suitable, or if it's decided for any reason that these people, I mean, I heard Ms. Leerson. I think she's perfectly qualified. I don't know the reason, and I think it's honorable for what she does. But if they are warranted...
Hello, Michael Barnes, 17 Sullivan Farm. A lot of what you heard tonight is true, and a lot is a distortion. The appointments that the mayor forwarded, many of them are fine people and would be terrific. But some of the comparisons being made to two years ago are comparing apples to elephants. It has always been the tradition that the outgoing mayor would call and contact the people on the boards and commissions whose terms were expiring and ask them if they want to continue. So, the majority end up being reappointments, not coming out of the blue. There is also something that is really unprecedented this time in certain people changing their affiliation from Democrat to unaffiliated to stack aboard. And the most bizarre one of these is the mayor's wife changing from Democrat to unaffiliated to stack the Ethics Commission. Now, think about this, folks. We're talking about the Ethics Commission. Who wants to stack the Ethics Commission with an unethical move? It's, there's no way you can do that anyway because the time period expires, so she cannot be seated anyhow. But it's just the idea that someone would try to do this. I think that's what's upsetting me. It's not the names that have been put forward. Many of the names, most of the names are great people and will do a fine job if they're done. But you cannot accept this. You just can't accept this. Thank you.
Francis, that's it?
Yes.
Okay. I was expecting more. That's okay. Let's go to item three, approval of the prior minutes.
Most approved the regular town council meeting minutes of 11:06, 2017.
In a second?
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Point of order.
Aye.
Point of order. We have a town council meeting in question on whether he has the ability to be seated. According to the charter, he is not to be seated. What is the ruling from legal counsel?
Hold on for a second.
I'm trying to look up the case law that is under DeBellas. I'm scrambling, trying to listen and trying to...
Hold on for a second because we don't set the terms for anybody that's seated here. When John, when Mr. Kane was appointed as a member, we had this discussion, and it was agreed that his term would go to November 30th. And ultimately, the town clerk identifies the terms. The town clerk, hold on for a second, identifies the terms. And I've got the list. It was updated November 15, 2017. And she has John Kane, Town Council, 9/11, 2017, to 11/30, 2017. So, with that being said, you could question it, and there may be questions about other terms that were improper or improperly identified. But for these purposes, and for tonight, Mr. Kane is properly seated, and he's entitled to vote. Yes?
When was the town clerk, when did she update it?
This was updated November 15th.
This week, or last week?
Yeah. And it's been, it's been that way for months since he was originally appointed.
At the meeting, I do remember that it came up. I don't recall that it was determined, though, that it was correct to go to the end of the month. And actually, the town clerk, when asked, said that no one had ever inquired of her. You had made a comment that you had inquired, or someone had talked to her about it, and she said, "No, they had not." So, I'm just, that's why I wanted to know when that happened.
We did vote at the time, and we go back to the minutes. We did have this discussion, and it was agreed before we voted to appoint him that his term went till November 30th.
It goes against, it goes against the charter.
I don't think so.
Well, I do. I can show it to you if you'd like.
The town clerk determined that for town council purposes, it was not the same as another board or commission. Because effectively, what you'd be doing is creating a vacancy on the town council for whatever it is, three weeks, four weeks.
I think our charter probably usurps our town clerk. And in this case, we have our former town attorney, who has sent this letter, making it very clear, and our current town attorney is looking through it. And it clearly states in the charter that after the election, that's that. And we brought it up and not leave it at that.
Sure. Mr. Bass?
I'd like to see if we could take a recess for the town attorney to render a decision. As we talked about the charter previously, when Mr. Tower was here, and you made a motion to adjourn to let Mr. Tower talk to Mr. DeBella on the phone, and then he came back and rendered a decision. This is a very important... This is a very important decision, and I think we need to rely on our town attorney.
Let me ask you, Attorney Rigdon, is this something that you're gonna be able to render an opinion on in five minutes, in 10 minutes?
I can run down to my office, wax law, and see what I can know about that.
That's fair, but I'd like to emphasize again, though-
I mean, I can tell how I need to-
The clerk is the arbiter of these matters. The clerk does supersede- She said, she interprets, ladies and gentlemen, listen to me, the town clerk sets the terms and confirms the terms for people that are appointed. And she has routinely come to us and said, you know, Mayor, you made an appointment.
Do you please just-
Excuse me!
Joe, 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 if you could please-
Get to do that.
I, I as the parliamentarian, I want, if you could please just refrain from calling out until we figure out the situation. I appreciate that.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Rigdon. So the town clerk does set the terms. She's the arbiter of it. She does identify, um, and if you have an issue with the term, then it's, she's the proper person to take it up with. But you're talking about unseating somebody who is here, who is seated according to the clerk.
We've had a request for recess to have our town attorney work on it.
Sure, let's take a recess. All right. All right, let's come back in session. So we recessed for our town attorney to review the matter. Attorney Rigdon?
Yes.
You have an opinion?
I'm gonna go up here.
Sure, you go up to the podium, please. Thank you.
So I'm premising this on the fact-
Would you be able to meet me turned up so we could hear what you have to say?
I don't think she could.
I'll stand over there.
Express the floor.
That's why you guys can't even hear me.
That's the microphone. We'll, we'll repeat anything. I do want it to be called for the record, though, so I mean, I do want you speaking to the microphone. Yeah. Yeah, just speak on it.
Okay, so I did try to speak to Randy Dabella. I left him a message to see what case law he was relying on. I did inquire it, review the, the language of the charter. Here's my take, and some of you may disagree with me. Basically, my reading of the statute is that when there's a vacancy, there are two options. Either you can fill the vacancy, or you can wait for an election. And again, it goes into that 60-day period. So if an election were to happen on the 59th, you could fill it with the new person that's voted in and not appoint anyone. You guys appointed, so he's here till the 30th.
And did you read the minutes also from November 11th?
I did briefly. I remember the conversation.
Let me just review it. So there's background. So Mr. Samansky asked if the appointment is for until the end of November or until the election, citing the town, the town's charter. I'd said it was up to the town clerk's interpretation, uh, and then we confirmed that the town clerk confirmed that the term would extend to November 30th. And again, that's what the clerk has set forth in her posting, that she not only files on, on the town's official website, but with the state as well. Mr. Samansky asked Mr. Tower, and Mr. Tower didn't dispute that. Just said it was within the town council's right to make an appointment for that extended term. So we got the town clerk making, uh, you know, a determination. Who's a Republican? So it's not partisan. We've got, at the time, everybody believed that it was until November 30th. I think it would be, it would be unfair to come in today and say, Mr. Kane can't serve or vote when everybody relied upon the unanimous vote back on September 11th. And then Attorney Rigdon's interpretation, I think, confirms that as well.
So because you have 60 days, what you could have done was not voted, and you could have left it open if the election were going to occur within that 60-day period. So you voted no.
Okay, fair. Mr. Kane?
Um, I hold no ill will for anybody that brought this up. It's a legitimate question, and like any legal question, there's probably one, one way to look at it. So it's an honor to serve here for the short period that I have, and I'll do my best.
Thanks. Okay. So, Zane, further discussion. We were discussing the approval of the prior minutes. There was a motion. There was a second. There's no further discussion? Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's comments? There's been enough comments for tonight. I'll just leave it at, uh, I'll leave it because I do think that there is, I'm gonna ask that we table the appointments question, and I'll address it, uh, any comments at that point as well. Parks and Recreation, entertain a motion.
Discussion and possible action on the acceptance of the following donations for the purchase and delivery of a memorial park bench. These funds are to be deposited into the Milford Parks and Recreation Gift Fund. $250 from Bodel E. Breran Trust, $25 from Daniel and Diane Rosemark, $225 from Phyllis and Leonard Scher, $100 from Francis and Alfred Fertini, $100 from John E. Hodge, and $50 from William Brown.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And B?
Discussion and possible action on the acceptance of a Christmas tree generously donated for the holiday season by Mr. and Mrs. Christopher Prowse, to be placed at the outside entrance of town hall.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And regarding item six, I'll entertain a motion to table this discussion and the appointments so that, number one, we could address any concerns from Mr. Bass of the caucus specifically about who they object to, so that we could work out a reasonable resolution, and to give all these people here the opportunity to volunteer. Like I said, nobody has volunteered for these positions. So we've got 100 and some out of them. It's difficult. We welcome anybody to kind of get in touch with us. But I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Can I just interject for one second?
Sure.
I think it's want everyone to be sort of as educated as possible. You actually have two options. So you can table the motion, which would require a second and a majority to carry. There's to be no discussion on any of the appointments, and it must be addressed at the next meeting.
Right.
Your other option is to postpone number six, um, which again requires a motion and a second, and it can be postponed until a date certain. It doesn't have to be the next meeting. It could be whenever, so.
Well, I mean, we intend to call a special, a special town meeting next week. So do any one of those include that?
The second one? I think that you would have to postpone it because-
Postpone for a special town meeting?
Right, because it would be the next regular meeting that it would table to.
Okay, so-
So you have to postpone it.
Okay, so a motion to postpone, so we can have a special town meeting, address any of the issues that, um, Mr. Bass or anybody else has, and to open it up for more people to contact my office if they're willing to serve.
So moved.
Okay, we have a second. Go. Well, we'll draw the first one. Uh, so is there a second? Mr. Kane, second. He said there's no discussion, so call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
And I'm the tiebreaker, so I'm gonna vote aye. All right.
Excuse me, point of order, point of order.
I'm sorry, I can't break a tie?
No, in the appointments, you need to have two-thirds of the full town council, which is five.
I agree.
You don't have five votes.
We're not making appointments. We're motioning to postpone.
No.
Yeah, it's a procedure.
Why are we motioning? I'm asking you, why are you tabling? You have enough people here to do the voting.
Because I don't have Mr. Worgo.
Because you don't have Mr. Worgo here, doesn't matter.
Mr. Samansky, Mr. Mayor, two-thirds.
If you're a town attorney, two-thirds.
If you're, if you're bookending, it's okay. We kind of stop, so. We, thank you.
But hold up a second.
I'm asking our town attorney one more time. You're getting it tonight.
That's good.
Two-thirds of nine, is how many, is five.
Right.
Okay? So there is no reason to table the discussion of these appointments.
I think that-
That is the first thing you talk about, not whether or not-
Cannot table. Hold on, let me, let me phrase this. If we were to make an appointment, yes, you need five people to make an appointment. Let me just figure. This is a procedural matter where we're tabling or postponing the matter until the next special town meeting can be called. That does not require two-thirds. It's a simple majority.
Excuse me, Mayor, you put that up first. We said no. I'm asking the town attorney. And since we are, she's still our town attorney and being paid to be, once, I'd like to let her give us an opinion.
Well, it's actually our parliamentarian who should give an opinion because it's a procedural matter.
Well, then maybe let her say it.
Sure.
But I'm asking, I have a right as a member of the town council to ask our town attorney a question.
Sure.
Okay? I realize you're an attorney, and that's nice, but I, I-
So you, in order to pass these appointments, you need a majority of the whole town council?
Nine, which is five.
Five.
Okay.
Correct.
So the fact that we have that number of people sitting here at this table, and we've already put to rest that John Kane is a part of this council. So do we have five people here? Is there any reason that we should not take a vote on this?
That's a different, that's not a legal discussion.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Is there any reason?
Excuse me.
This Francis.
Because two of your people are not here. Big deal. They're not here. We have enough people to do this vote, okay? She's the attorney. In this case, what she says goes.
But you're missing the facts. You're skewing the facts.
No, I am not. You asked to do something before we even got to the time to talk about this, and we said no.
What's the motion right now?
The motion you asked for was whether or not we were gonna postpone, and we said no.
You need two-thirds for that.
You do not.
Yes, you do.
If it was a motion to postpone, the Parks and Recreation matter, because we don't have people. If it was a motion to postpone or table, the Parks and Recreation matter.
I'm gonna defer again to our town attorney.
She can't render an opinion unless you proffer-
Isn't that what we pay her for?
Proffer the appropriate facts. The fact is, we are not voting on section, where's my charter?
You asked for a postponement because there weren't enough people here. There are enough people. So what you asked for, we said no.
No, I asked for a postponement because we don't have everybody here.
Well, why do we have to have everybody? We don't have everybody.
And we've done that before on important votes.
Absolutely not.
Excuse me, we also asked so that other people-
I still have the floor, Mary Jane, and I'm still asking our town attorney. We have enough people here to take the vote that is needed on these appointments, right? Thank you.
You cannot be the tiebreaker. It's two-thirds of this body, which is five.
Let's take another recess.
Say it all you like.
Five-minute recess. Maybe you get Randy Dabella on the phone this time. Five-minute recess. Randy's not the town attorney.
He was.
He's not right now.
You're the parliamentarian. What do you-
Five-minute recess. Let's discuss.
You said five?
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are back in session. Thank you very much for your patience. So there was a question about, is it a procedural or substantive motion to table that requires a five-person majority or majority of people present? Rebecca, I know you had a recommendation. Do you want to just kind of make it, and then we could take it from there?
I do.
Well, we're, it, it's, let's just go forward with it. So whether it's procedural or substantive, the reason that we wanted to table it was so that, A, I agree with the U's. There was an assumption made that the U's were effective upon filing, and that was wrong. The DTC made these recommendations to me, and it was based on an assumption that was true, and it turns not to be. So we could table the matter and allow the issue to be addressed, or allow Mr. Bass or anybody else to specifically recommend people to be appointed. Or we could go forward tonight, and I think it's pretty clear, it's gonna fall on party lines, and it will fail, and we could talk about having a special town meeting next week anyway. But I leave it up to you guys. If you want to table it to address some of these issues and get some information, fine. If you want to have the motion, put it on the record, you know, regarding the appointments, that's fine, too. We could do either one. So what do you guys want to do? Ms. Lund?
I'd say let's make a motion to put the appointments and reappointments on now.
Okay. Anybody, everybody agree?
A motion to put them on the agenda now.
That's, Mr. Esposito?
Yeah, he's just listening. He's not voting. He's listening.
Yeah. So there's nothing for the record, because he can't participate over phone. He can't speak. It's distracting. Mr. Esposito, you can't participate by phone.
Who says?
It's been a longstanding, we've asked this multiple times through various administrations. You cannot participate through phone.
All right, so anybody else have an opinion on what you want to do? Go ahead with the motions for appointments and reappointments. Do you want to go?
Mr. Esposito, can you mute that, please?
Turn it off, please.
As the presiding officer. I'm asking you.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Jessica, please.
If you do a point of order, it means the subject allows him to speak.
But there's no, there's no participating through phone.
Well, we're not, um, okay, Katie, do you have a feeling about what you want to do? Do you want to go ahead with the motions for the appointments and reappointments?
You're reading the statute.
Yeah, but, but it is-
I'm reading the statute. Could you give me the time?
We can't have people participating through phone.
Well, maybe we should call Frank if we can get Frank.
And you took a half-hour recess, so.
Yes, I'm happy to discuss in recess, but we're in session, Ms. Francis, everybody.
He's reading the statute, okay. I have, I have a question. I have a question.
Yes.
You said, you gave us, you know, the options again.
Sure.
And then you said, and we can then have a special meeting. There's no need for a special meeting. We're back to what was said before.
I would call a special meeting next week.
But why?
And here again.
We have a, Mayor, please, just let me say this one more time.
Sure, you can say it.
And you can walk out on another recess. We have a majority here. We have three pages of appointments and reappointments to discuss and vote on. Why are we not doing that? Why are you trying to add something, change something? Let's just do what the agenda calls for.
Sure.
That's just what I asked for.
That's your prerogative. Why don't you do it? And that's fine.
It's just what I asked for.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I started there.
That's what she said.
I couldn't hear or quality stop.
Okay, so, um, is everybody in agreement? Okay, make a motion to approve the appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions as listed on the agenda.
There's a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion fails. The ayes were Mary Jane, John, and Jessica. Opposed? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.